Okay, sorry everyone, I just had a signed discussion here about the the issue with the broken link not allowing access into Zoom. And I think for that, there's, there's one thing we will have to be doing. Because some people have contacted Joanna saying that they can't get into the meeting. And they've called and are unable to get into the meeting. That we will have to postpone the public hearing to the next meeting. So that would affect case zero, or I'm sorry, case 20003 S U B. Robert DeBerto, the 14 lot subdivision because we have, and Mr. Berry, I'm sorry about that. But because we have, you know, an issue that potentially would be that public would not gain access to this, it could come back for an appeal. So to be safe for everybody, we, we, I would like to wait to open that public hearing back up. What I would like to do though, is when we get the meeting started, I will ask the board if, if, if a site walk is desired, because that was mentioned in the past and one hasn't taken place. So in order to hold a site walk, we have to have a vote to do that. And we also have to, you know, have a notice. So, so that we don't do this in two weeks and then have any other delays to then do the site walk two weeks later. I would like to ask the board if they're comfortable with setting up a site walk, at least scheduling one. So that's where, that's where I'm gonna go with this. We will hold the other sessions, so the conceptual, we have two conceptuals this evening. We will hold those, since they are conceptual, they're non-binding and they're non-public input. And we will also hold the school board relative to the impact fees. None of those require a public hearing. So in that case, we need to continue the first case with the public hearing, and I apologize Go ahead, Mr. Berry, if you could unmute him.
Mr. Chair, we, we met with the Conservation Commission the beginning of this month. And they, I believe, if my memory serves me correctly, they expressed interest in also being invited to the site walk. So if we could, if we could, I know one of the members is also a member of the Conscom, but if we could invite them also, that would be, that would be great.
Okay. Thank you. And apologize again. So let me, let me call this meeting to order. This is the, maybe I should have said that before, but this is Nottingham Planning Board, Wednesday, June 24th, 2020. It is 7:12. And we are holding a virtual hearing. Access to this meeting was given through Zoom. And because we have had some notification issues, we will not be holding public hearings tonight, but we have, will be holding some of the meeting agendas. All members of the committee have the ability to communicate during this meeting and through this platform. And because public access cannot fully do that, we will, like I said, we'll continue the public hearing. I would like to just go to the board and make sure those are present and that we have a verbal acknowledgement. So let me, let me go to Ed, Ed Veale, at least say you're present.
Present.
Joe, could you unmute yourself? Hey, Joe. Hey, Joe, I see your name, but not, like, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? Sorry, my mouse is now not working, so I can't get to the mute button. I'm trying to find my cursor and it's nowhere to be found, so I am here.
It's gone. All right, thanks, Joe.
I may need to restart at some point, so if I disappear, I'll come back up.
All right, thank you. Gary Anderson. Sue Mooney, could you hear?
I'm, I'm here. Apparently I was muted.
Okay, as long as you're here.
Yep.
Just to acknowledge that. And I guess, Buzz is here, Robert Davies, right?
Yes, I'm here.
And any other board members that I missed here?
Do we have a selectman rep?
Tyler Reaton sent a message saying he couldn't attend tonight.
And is Leanne present?
Okay, so Leanne's not, then, so I would need to seat one more member from the, no, so.
No, only the selectman rep is missing, and I don't think they assigned anybody.
Okay, so I don't need to sit anyone for that vote? Okay.
Is Gary here?
Gary's here, yes.
Okay. Sorry, I missed, missed you, Gary.
Okay. So Buzz, you're still on the alternate, but please chime in with any comments or questions.
Yep.
So as the meeting is open, I do want to, the first part of our agenda, as I mentioned earlier, is case 20003 S U B. This is the application for a 14 lot subdivision from Robert DeBerto. And it is on Mitchell Road. And due to technical issues, we will be required to continue this meeting to the next planning board meeting. Joanna, do you have that date?
July 10th.
July 10th? Okay. And with that, I would like to ask board members if, well, it sounds like we would like to do a site visit. And, go ahead, Mr. Berry.
July 10th is a Friday.
That's a Friday.
July 8th is the correct date.
July 8th.
Sorry.
Yeah.
So we would need to entertain a vote to, or I would entertain a vote to, to request a site visit. And that will be coordinated with the applicant and the Conservation Commission. And a date will be posted. Do we have to, what, what type of notice do we have to provide, Joanna?
I would post a site walk notice 24 hours before the meeting.
So we can do that with, in the next, the next week. Mr. Berry, is that, is that available sometime next week? And we will get with you on more details of time and specifics.
Yep. Yeah, I'm available all next week. If the board just wants to let me know what they want to see, I'd be happy to survey it and stake it out and.
Sounds great. We'll get, we'll coordinate with Conservation Commission and board members, and then we'll get back to you on a specific day and time.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, just, because I know next week is the holiday for a lot of people. I don't know if I could just propose a time and see if it works for everybody and.
Yeah, that's fine.
That would allow me Monday or Tuesday at, say like 5:30.
That way people can come off work.
Yeah, that's the 30th. Yeah, that, that's good.
Mr. Berry, does that seem to work for you for enough time and everything?
Yeah, what was the date proposed, Tuesday the 30th?
I was looking at like, yeah, either Monday or Tuesday, just to get it out of the way and make sure we have enough time and we don't get too close to the holiday for people.
Yeah, yeah, well, we can take care of it by then.
Yep. Okay.
You wanna, Mr. Chairman, do you want just like a quick straw poll of members to see if that day works for them?
Yes, if anyone just wants to say that that day doesn't work for them.
Mr. Chairs, Ian, Tuesday would be better for me.
Okay.
I have another planning board meeting on the Monday.
Okay. Well, I think Tuesday is what we're honing in on, so Tuesday, what time? 6 o'clock?
5:30 or 6, yeah.
Joe, are you available for that?
I should be. I will have to check with work, but I think it will be okay.
Okay, Gary, are you okay with Tuesday at 5:30?
Is that Tuesday the 2nd or?
Tuesday the 30th.
The 30th. Yes, I can do that.
Sue, is that okay with you? And I guess, as a representative of the Conservation Commission?
Yes, and I will send a notice out to the members.
Okay. And Buzz, is that something you're available to attend?
Yeah, Tuesday, Tuesday is definitely better for me than Monday, so yeah.
Okay, so let's make it certain that it's Tuesday, July 30th at 5:30. And this should be, don't know what the gathering spot is available over there, but sure, we'll find one.
Tuesday, June 30th.
Did I say July?
Yeah, just jumping ahead.
Oh, we're all screwy. Okay, so, do we, go ahead, Mr. Berry.
Center of the line of road every 100 feet acceptable, or do we want to see more than
Yeah, I mean, it, it probably doesn't have to be every 100, just if you give us an idea, just blaze it and, and then we can work our way around that road.
Okay.
That would be helpful. Primarily, certainly the roadway entrances as they come off.
And maybe the wetland crossings most critical.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
I was thinking of you, Sue. So we'll, we'll station it off so that we, if we've got an overview plan with the stations on it, then we kind of know where we're at on the face of the earth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the last piece on that is, I think Steph had sent out some helpful guidance we could use, adopt for conducting sidewalks, so we can always put that on the, on the, the notice, the online notice.
Yep.
Just like masks, distance and such.
Right.
Protocol.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have Joanna, if you can make sure that that gets on the notice.
Are you looking for a motion now at this point, Mr. Chair, to continue?
Yes.
And we agree on July 8th with the applicant, is that right?
Could you repeat that? I didn't get it.
July 8th, Mr. Berry. We continue to July 8th, yeah. Yeah, so Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue case 20-003-SUB to Wednesday, July 8th at 7:00 PM. This is Mr. Veale.
Motion and a second, let me roll call Ed Veale.
Yes.
Joe Clough.
Yes.
Ian McKinnon.
Yes.
Gary Anderson.
Yes.
Sue Mooney.
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that's unanimous. That will be moved. And there is a little bit more information. Mr. Berry did provide some draft responses to some of the comments, and we'll distribute that out to board members. So that we can be, you know, fully informed of consultant reviews, comments, and Mr. Berry's responses, at least to those. And Mr. Berry, were you planning on submitting formal responses, or did you want to go to the meeting first and?
No, what I presented tonight was just an outline of what I was going to address verbally. So I'll formally respond, now that I have the time, I'll formally respond to each one of those items.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you and sorry for that delay.
Thank you and have a good night.
Yep, good night. So let's move into the public meeting portion of this. So there's a conceptual for the Fife property, and that's 85 Deerfield Road, map 52 lot 6. This was brought before the board last meeting, I believe, or meeting, two meetings ago. And I just wanted to hear from Fife if, if you've got some additional information for But Joanna, can you unmute her, please?
There we go. I'm gagged. Thank you for agreeing to hear me out again. Yes, we do have some new information. Just to give you a little quick background, if it's unnecessary, tell me to move on. We have a, an almost seven acre partial on Deerfield Road, and we would like to subdivide it in order to give a portion of that land to our daughter and her husband to build a small greenhouse on. We approached this, looking at it as a possible back lot subdivision, and we've abandoned that. That doesn't seem appropriate. We've talked with Steph. And today, I met with Sean McLean, because really, it's the access to the property that concerns us the most. And Sean had, I thought, some really good observations. He, he is on board with us with the idea of going ahead, asking for a variance from the VBA in order to eliminate the 200 foot frontage regulation. And I'm just going to paraphrase from actually the email I sent to Stephanie today, if you don't mind. It would be based on us obtaining a limited access or right of way to our neighbor's existing driveway, which runs right along a rock wall up our property, the area that we would want to subdivide. And I'm sorry, I find it so frustrating not to be able to like have the maps and be able to.
I know, I'm pointing, yeah.
Hopefully, you know, if you have questions, please ask me, I'll try to explain it. Their driveway was the original Deerfield Road. It ran up a hill, and at some point in the past, who knows when, it was regraded and Deerfield Road took a turn to the left and is a more flat grade. It was rather, it was a hill. So there are beautiful historic rock walls that run up this driveway. And when Sean looked at it, his biggest concern was public safety and infrastructure. And he felt that it would be very good to obtain that easement and have access to the new subdivision up that driveway, halfway up that driveway, that would eliminate any exiting and entering right onto Deerfield Road. There is a field of view on both sides, but our driveway is there as well as our neighbor's driveway. And he just thought it would be a lot better to do it, you know, to do the access to the subdivision off the Prue's driveway. He did measure the driveway. It measured a little over 15 feet in width. He proclaimed it to be in very good condition. It was built on an old road and it's been very well maintained, with the whole idea that it's accessible to any emergency equipment, should it ever be up there. I hope not. So he thought that was all bandy. He also agreed with me that the driveway that we're referring to, our neighbors, has several historic and aesthetic qualities that the solution of obtaining an easement from our neighbors would solve. One is that it would really help maintain the rural character of our property. That's why we're here. We really, our entire investment is in our home. We moved into it four years ago and it was a wreck. And we've done nothing but, but, you know, tried to improve the property. So it's very important to us to maintain that rural character and aesthetic character. Also, this solution would help us rebuild and improve the rock walls that run along this ancient roadway, which is now a driveway. And our neighbors would love to do that as well. It would prevent us the hardship of having to purchase a piece of property. And again, I don't know if you have a map in front of you, but it would involve us purchasing a wedge of property that would run across the Prue's driveway to the new Deerfield Road, the present Deerfield Road. And we would have to purchase that and then deback that part of the driveway to our neighbors, which I guess could be done, but seems unnecessary as long as we're meeting the intent of the, of the regulations. And we would really base our request for variance on the fact that approval would not cause any adjoining properties to lose value. It wouldn't compromise any public or safety issues. And it's a rather unique configuration, but we think it would enhance and protect the rural nature and the aesthetic qualities that these regulations are intended to protect. And additionally, the shared driveway concept is very acceptable to our neighbors, Art and Rob and Prue, because we could then share upkeep and maintenance of this long driveway, as well as protecting and maintaining the historic rock walls that run along it.
Well, that's great. So your, your next step would be to make an application to the zoning board of appeals.
Correct. And I just wanted to run this by you greater heads than I, this is all rather new to me. And if anybody sees any very obvious objections to this.
Well, once we have a zoning variance that, that says that, you know, the planning board can, you know, do something that's not in our regulation, you know, then, then that's when we could act on a subdivision. Would you have the similar configuration of a lot?
Yes, you can see the, the map right now, I believe.
Yeah.
And, and you'll see this large triangle, which is our entire property. And a bit over to the left-hand side, you see a smaller triangle that's in lighter green, still within our property boundary.
Yeah.
And that would be the area that we would be giving to our kids.
I see.
And it includes a little barn down, and I know it's, it's very hard to see the Prue's driveway, actually, you see where Deerfield Road runs now. It, it goes past our property and our existing, you can barely see our house and our garage on the lower right-hand side. We sit on Deerfield Road. And at one time, Deerfield Road just shot right up, right along our white border, up into the Prue's property. And at some point, that was changed. Originally, historically, that was Deerfield Road, and we did have frontage. But the, the main point is that, you know, I believe the 200 foot frontage is to sort of protect from overcrowding and to maintain a rural atmosphere. And it just seemed like it would be a hardship to have to purchase that wedge that goes over their existing gravel driveway to, to get down to Deerfield Road. It's unbuildable, it's unusable, it's a very steep slope. I see why they moved it, why they moved the road whenever they did. And it just, it seemed like as long as we were keeping with the spirit and intent of the laws and regulations, we should be okay, I hope.
Sure. Let me, let me.
You're okay.
Yeah, let me, let me ask if any of the planning board members have a question or comment about that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Veale. The only thing I would recommend to the applicant is that they just review the rest of the zoning ordinance, make sure.
Setbacks and everything can, can be.
The proposed law would meet, right, they could try to, try to get it all done one shot, because they can, the VBA can only act on what you ask for. So if there happen to be other things that you're going to need, it avoids that repeat trip and fees and noticing and everything else.
Awesome. Good advice.
Okay, anything else from the board?
I was gonna say, and the setbacks go for, for the proposed new lot as well as the proposed existing lot.
Correct. I believe it's 50 foot setback in the front, and has it changed to 20 feet on the sides yet, or is that still 50 feet on the sides?
20 for septics, but 50 for, that's show 50 for, for the house and other structures.
Yeah, yeah, we've got plenty to do that.
Well, appreciated. Hopefully, we've given you some good direction and you can get on to the next one. We'll, sure, we'll see you back.
Great. Thanks so much again. I really appreciate your help.
Yep, you bet.
Take care.
All right, um, next up is a conceptual for Deek Fuel. Eric Decoto, 248 Old Turnpike Road, that's map 16 lot 36 lot sub A. If the applicant or representative is available to.
Yeah, I'm right here.
Or discuss it, yeah.
Scott Frank was from National Land Consultants, here speaking for Eric. I'm going to share my screen, it's easier to look at the plan while I talk, I suppose, so everybody can see what, what we're proposing. And that's not worth. So it's an existing, minimize that a little bit. An existing lot on Route 4, it's about 800 feet west of the intersection of 152 and Route 4, just over the town line. And it's just under two acres. There's a lot of challenges on the property. Slope and wetlands, wetlands, everything's, existing conditions have been surveyed, boundary. And what Eric would like to propose is a small, two, two bay garage where his trucks would be in a small 1200 or 300 square foot office. The access would come off of Route 4. And there is a stake in the ground where that driveway would, would come in, because we've applied for a driveway permit if anybody wanted to drive by there. The problem with the lot is the setbacks in the commercial zone, everything has to be set back 100 feet from all property lines. And if you do that on this lot, oops, lost it. Lost the drawing. So if you do that with this lot, you can see on this drawing, 100 foot setback from Route 4, and then the 100 foot setback from the property line back here. And that is a commercial use on that parcel, but it leaves us with just under 31 feet and then strip there. So we brought the application into the town last week, talked with Joanna, and knew we had to ask for a variance from the back lot line, the way we have it laid out, and that for some reason, that second page isn't coming up. But.
I, I can share my screen, I've got it, if it's easier.
So the G is for the, on the, on the plan is for the garage and O is for the office. It's a small 1200 square foot garage, a two bay garage, two parking spaces in front of the building, and then a small office space on the, on the right side of it as you look at it. We're asking, we went in to file a building permit to get it denied. We're asking, we went in to file a building permit to get it denied to go to the zoning board, and Joanna had suggested that we come talk to the planning board first before we go and submit to the ZBA for the variance on July 1st. So we're here kind of just to talk to the board about if there's anything else that jumps out at you that may need a variance. There is substantial grading that's going to happen on the site to make a level pad for the building. But the variance we were proposing so far was the 100-foot setback to the rear property line.
What could you put the garage and the office, the front face of it on the front setback and have the parking space outside that setback line?
It would get, what we tried to do is keep it the 50-foot from the wetlands.
Oh, I see your buffer, okay, I didn't realize that was a buffer in front.
So the wetlands doesn't connect, but it comes up around both sides, so it kind of pinches off the front, front area. But we could push it a little bit more forward, keeping that, trying to keep as much grading and in the parking out of that buffer.
So it's about a. So this sits lower or higher than the road?
It will be lower. There is quite the valley between the road and where the building is proposed. There will be a fill to get across that. And then the hill that's on the property will be cut down to place the building to reduce the fill that's where we're crossing in the, between the wetlands.
And you don't think that the driveway side slopes will impact the wetland? You can keep that out of there?
Yeah, we're going to keep it out of the wetlands. I did some preliminary grading on it, we will be able to keep it out. And the reason for the way the driveway is, is like that, kind of, that that angle to it is because of that catch basin and pipe that discharges over onto the property. There's actual, DOT has an easement to discharge onto the property, so we can't impact that discharge point.
And then that drains, that drains to the wetland to the west?
Yes, yeah. And it all connects down around into the North River.
Any board members have questions or comments for this conceptual?
Mr. Chairman, this is Susan. I just want to point out that that ribbon of wetlands that's on the map to the left is the North River. And just downstream from where this proposal will be located, the North River is part of the Protected Rivers status of the state of New Hampshire and also the Lamprey River watershed. So any proactive design that would prevent noxious materials, it could be salt, it could be runoff from the fuel business, to prevent any negative impact to the North River complex would be prudent. Thank you.
In the North River, right where we are, it's not part of the jurisdiction of New Hampshire Shoreland Protection, but obviously, anything with the oil, the trucks will be emptied out every night. As far, and Eric can speak better to his business, I guess, plan than I could. The way I understand it, they will be empty when they come. And then in the morning, they leave, they go fill up and empty the oil throughout the day.
Yeah, but additionally, when snow is plowed in the wintertime, an area that's not, that is far away from any wetland and potential runoff is possible.
Yep.
Please.
Any other board members with.
Yes, I'd just like, just asked the question about the driveway configuration and the wetlands crossing. And I think I know the answer to this, but is it possible to move, I guess that would be west, away from the wetlands at all or not? Or is it because of the elevation or the grade changes that that's not the plan?
You have wetlands on either side, so we kind of threaded it. There's wetlands to the west and to the east. So to avoid impacts to either wetland, we put it where we could, as close to the eastern wetland as we could without impacting the wetland. And then, like I said, on the front there, it's going into Route 4 because of that drainage that DOT has. So we're not, we don't have any wetland impacts with this conceptual layout. Direct wetland.
Thank you.
This is Mr. Beal, so when I look at it, a couple of things pop up. Obviously, the variance that would be needed for the the setbacks that were discussed. Wetlands are, I don't know, they're just being assumed right now is poorly drained versus very poorly drained, because that could change things significantly with the setback distance.
They are poorly drained, yeah.
Okay. And it looks like, obviously, there will be some impact to the, within the buffer, the wetlands buffer with cut and fill. The proposed driveway, I'm assuming, is at a grade that's sufficient for commercial trucks, which was 4%, 6%, 8%, something like that?
Yeah, we did some preliminary looking at it, we haven't finalized it yet.
And then, can't remember exactly where this is. I think it's far enough away from the exit of 152.
About 800 feet east of it.
Yeah, okay, and it's a straight, straight shot, I believe, pretty much from there. And then obviously, yeah, just the overall concern would be the, you know, making sure about just material being within, within, you know, this pre-substantial wetland area that does go to a pretty critical corridor for us. Topography is a concern. I don't know if those are any of those slopes over 25% now? Are they all under 25%?
They prob, some of them probably are over kind of where the hand is now in this area.
And, let's see. One more thing to, but, and then site plan would be required for this too, since it's in the commercial district. I think we'd have to make sure it fits within our permitted uses. And then lastly, just the buildable area, just, we'd have to see what, re-review the commercial zone and see what it requires for amount of upland soils and things like that.
Yeah, making sure you can get your septic and well in.
Yeah. Yeah, the lot is to over 2, oh, I have it under two acres. That says it's more.
That's just 2.15.
Right. So for loading and stuff like that, it would be such a small septic system, there'll be no problem with that.
Yeah.
Well, radius will be able to fit on there. The slopes will, will be, are a challenge on the lot. It's an existing lot of record for about 40 years. And he's just trying to make use of it on a, as a commercial use.
Yeah. Now, we certainly encourage commercial use along this stretch.
Mr. Chairman, the only comment I had, Mr. Beal kind of touched upon it, is I'm assuming because it's just a office space, there is a garage component, it's just checking the permitted uses within the commercial zone. There isn't really anything specifically related to garages, but if we're able to classify this as professional office space and just parking, we should be good. Seeing where that falls in permitted uses.
Yeah, I think there's some other similar uses that have been proposed in the past. Sort of an office and garage workshop warehouse type scenario. Okay, anything else from the board? I think, you know, you're probably right in the direction of, you know, having to get the ZBA have that setback.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions else for the board?
No, I think I've got plenty of homework to do for next Wednesday, and I thank you for your time.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me then get into the school board. I know you were on earlier, are you just calling in on the phone? I just don't recognize the.
There we go, Mr. Sousa. Sue Levinson was also on earlier, I don't know if she's.
Oh, okay.
I believe Sue Levinson's still on airs, under Bethany.
Hi, my daughter's, sorry.
That's right. Great, yeah, so wanted to discuss some impact fee appropriations.
I think we have a couple of board members as well, I think Christine Gabriel should be here.
I am here, yes.
Kathy Brosman is here, I'm here.
Okay.
Kelly Gordon, I'm here too.
Oh, great.
Well, I'll just kind of recap a little bit about what we're trying to do and then everybody. Basically, we've taken a look at the impact fees, part of $317,000 in impact fees. And we're currently doing, which is due on July 1st. And we're going, we're proposing using $200,000 of our the bonds.
You are, sorry to interrupt, but you were cutting out a little bit there, could you?
Maybe I'll, I'll take my video out, so you can hear me better.
Okay.
Hopefully that will help, does that help?
Yeah, I can, we can hear you now.
Okay, so the school district currently has $317,000 in impact fees. And we've looked at those and we see that we have $67,000 for the $20,000 that is, that will be expiring soon, June 22nd of next year. We are also submitting an application for building aid for our proposed project. And that is due July 1st. We are proposing using $200,000 in impact fees for that project pending building aid application approval. And those fees would be used for drawing down the bond payment or the interest rates. And then we have various other projects that we have kind of brainstormed and would like to propose for the use of the $67,000, ranging from preschool to upgrading our labs, where we have a bubble of students in our science labs. And I will, at this point, let Mr. Sousa and the other members kind of talk to you about some of the items that we've brainstormed for that $67,000.
I'll let the school board members begin. Christine?
Yeah, I don't have anything else to add, I don't think, too. I think Sue's covered it.
Okay. One of the issues we have, of course, is that there's a large.
Five items that we're proposing, so you go ahead and elaborate on those a bit. And then also, just thought about the $200,000 if the planning board wants acceptable use.
I'm sorry, Sue, were you directing that at me? I keep having a hard time hearing you.
No, I'm just proposing that Mr. Sousa elaborate on the other projects that we have detailed through two weeks around possible preschool use, possible putting toward the $95,000, using it toward the science labs.
Got it.
So as some of you may know, we have a large bubble of students going through the school at this time, that happens every now and then, depending on the enrollment as it comes up. And there's some areas of the school based on that large number of students that requires some updating. Some of it is in disrepair, but largely it's because of the number of students that we're putting in the classrooms now, particularly the science labs. So as Sue mentioned, one of the purposes we were thinking for using some of the funding was to offset the cost of redoing and then making it more manageable for a large number of students to be in our science labs. One of the other pieces we're looking at of using some of this funding is to offset the bond towards our building project. We're trying to come up with some funding to make it easier on the taxpayers with the $95,000, as well as perhaps using that funding to take care of the, some of the interest on the bond coming up, making the project more palpable. I'm not sure what we talked about with preschool, Sue.
Well, we had just kind of brainstormed that, that we are, you know, we're currently paying for preschool and we are discussing bringing that back to the building.
Yes, right, should we, you know, come up with a situation where we can actually have house preschool at the building? By bringing it back, it provides a cost savings to the district and to the town as well. So using some of that funding to help offset the development of space to bring the preschool back was, has been a topic of this conversation for quite some time. I definitely see that as something that we'll be doing in the future.
Yeah, I think you guys understand the reason for these impact fees and what they can and can't be used for. So, you know, just guide yourself in your narratives and specific needs towards, you know, the expansion or new needs because of those, the bubble, so to speak.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time talking about the population growth that we've been experiencing. And while, in some ways, it's been somewhat modest, you know, over the scope of 20 years in particular, but even recently, it has been steadily increasing. You know, it does have a positive curve for us. You know, if we're going to maintain the educational quality that we have, we certainly need to make sure that we're accommodating for all the students that we get.
Yep. Yeah, no, we encourage the use of these funds.
You guys have been very supportive, and you guys have provided some great feedback that have been discussed at the board level, so thank you for that.
Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Beal, I do, you know, in the, in the impact fee part of the zoning ordinance, it does discuss that it could be used for debt service and bonds, debt instruments and things like that, too. So it sounds like that there, it is an appropriate use. And that, at this point, unless they need guidance from us, if they were to try to want to expend those funds, I believe they have to go to the Board of Selectmen for approval. It's out of, I think at this point, it's out of our hands, right? I don't know, we can, we could recommend it, but really, it's not required, it's not a required step.
Right, we understand that, and we will be sending a letter to the Board of Selectmen. We just wanted to speak with you first because, you know, just to keep you.
Appreciate it.
About what we're considering. So we'll be sending a letter to them indicating that we'd like to use the $200,000. Of course, it's all predicated on our application, which will be since July 1st, and we won't, probably will not have an answer in time frame. So there would be no release of funds in the near term. And we'll be writing up some more of the details on some of these other proposed projects. I think we're leaving with the upgrade and expansion, if you will, of our current science labs, because they have not really been able to meet the needs of these bubbles of students in the north.
And having the planning board recommend this is a big step for us in, you know, the select board, what they do is they just authorize the release of the check of the funds, not necessarily approving the use of it, that's up to you guys. And so anything that you guys could provide for us as a recommendation would be excellent.
If you could provide us kind of the list of the five or something with some narrative to it. If you could provide us kind of the, the list of the five or something with a, some narrative to it, we'd be happy to review it and then endorse it if possible.
That'd be great, thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a clarifying question on the preschool. I'm just curious, it sounds like a financially prudent approach, but has there been clarity from town legal counsel? If that's... Does that fit with impact fees where we're making a financial decision, not necessarily directly related to development in the town?
We would have to run preschool by, as you say, through legal. What's happening right now is that we do have more preschool students than we can currently enroll in our programming, which is housed in Northwood. We have two small classrooms there, 300 square foot each, for a total of 760 square feet. We have a couple of rooms in our current building that are in excess of 1,000 square. The preschool of 1,000 square feet that we propose in our building would not be eligible for aid, so, building aid. So that does reduce our building aid, if you will, by $40,000. But we are paying right now $160,000 toward preschool. Last year, we paid $165,000 toward preschool. The 160 that we have this year is the result of no longer paying 1/3 of $25,000 in rent and using approximately $42,000 of our IDEA grant that was not initially earmarked for preschool. So we do not know what our costs will look like going forward, but it is a large chunk of money, and we do feel that it would be a positive item to have locally for the benefit of our families and our students, to integrate them earlier and understand their needs closer to home. And of course, we do have to work through the details of the cost and how we could potentially use impact fees if, in fact, we see that we could have more students there than we can currently serve. We have about five, I believe, 500 students in the zero to five range based on our demographics. So that's something we're trying to understand better.
Yeah, so Ms. Levinson, that seems like the, the key argument right there. So the financially prudent part is, is wonderful, and I support that part. But the, the impact fee part, I think, obviously, the, the not having enough space or capacity currently to handle the, the demand and the proposed, the, the future demand that we were expecting is where I believe the impact fees would, would come back, come into play.
Thank you, that, that's, that's a good area, we should just focus in on that, thank you.
I have somewhat of a general question to go along with the science labs. Those are some of the presentations on the proposed school addition is, I think there was some discussion during that on some of the lab work. Is the intent to try and get ahead and pull that portion out of the school expansion plan? Or was the plan always to do some level of lab work prior to that?
The lab work was included in our plan, but if we were to do the lab work, we would not have to do that. I'll let Mr. Sousa weigh in on that, but that is my understanding, it would not have to be part of the renovation. We currently plan to renovate... A fair, you know, we've got several square, thousand square feet of renovation included in our proposed plan.
Yes, that is correct. We, we've been looking at trying to come up with a solution for the science lab problem long before we thought about the whole renovation project. That had been a standalone piece for us because we've had this large bubble for the last several years. So if we can create it and accommodate that, we'll definitely pull it from the current proposal.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, any more from the school board or planning board? Well, that's great. No, we do appreciate you guys coming in and informing us because, you know, we're, we're just a small pin in this, but, you know, we like to know what's going on. And on the other end of things, we have applicants that, you know, are often asking where their money is going. So knowing this is very good.
Well, thank you very much, it's a small pin, but it's a vital pin, planning board's very important, so we appreciate your time.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for hearing from us today.
Yep, you bet.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep, good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, thank you.
Everybody except the board, you have to stay on a little bit longer. Okay. So that wraps up really that public meeting part of it. I guess I would just go around at this point and ask any board members if they have any updates. Let me start with Ian.
I have no updates. Looking forward to doing this in person at some point, but who knows when that'll be.
Yeah, actually, let me ask you, Anna, is there any more details of when we'd be meeting in person? I know the, the select board did meet in person.
Yes, so I communicated with Chris today, and unfortunately, Channel 22 has experienced some difficulties. So we're looking at at least two weeks before we could meet in person and have 22 broadcast and record. So therefore, he suggested at least one more Zoom meeting. And then we'll go from there. We can't, I can't make any promises until that's at least repaired.
Appreciate that. While you're talking, Joanna, do you have any updates?
No, there's, there's several cases going to the zoning board probably next month. So I think we're going to have probably four or five new cases before you guys in, probably the end of July, if not August.
Okay. Ed, do you have anything?
Clarification on that, just in general, are those the kind of minor items? Or do those look like they'll be like major subdivisions and anything big?
Minor, for sure.
And other than that, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything.
Joe?
No updates, other than my mouse works now.
Thanks for that.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Gary?
Just that Stratford is having a conceptual meeting, I believe it's tomorrow. And ironically, on the effects of COVID. Unfortunately, I don't believe I can make that one, but look forward to try to update you guys on what I find out. Or maybe Steph can help on that, that end of things.
Right. Sue, do you have any updates?
Yeah, just a little one, the Conservation Commission, five of us met with the select board just past Monday in Councilroom 1 to, together with them, we had a public hearing to solicit public input. Of course, there wasn't any, but we needed to do that in order for the select board to approve the withdrawal of funds from the Conservation Fund to help pay for a stewardship plan that is necessary prior to having a permanent trail design for the William E. Kennard Forest on Kennard Road. The property is owned by the town, but the Conservation Neesman is, is held by Bear Par Regional Greenway Land Trust. So they require the stewardship plan in order to be able to finalize the trail design for the public. That went well, thank you.
Buzz, did you have any updates?
Only that I saw a bear running across Route 152, just north of Demmon Store on Monday morning. Other than that, all set.
All right. I guess the only update I would have, well, let me go to Steph, you're, you've been quiet all meeting.
You haven't needed me. My only update is going off of what Gary said. Tomorrow is the Stratford Regional Planning Commission's annual meeting. So traditionally, we have a panel of experts speaking on a topic that's affecting the region. Tomorrow is discussing the impacts of COVID-19 and how it's affected the local economy and how organizations and communities have adapted. So we have three speakers, one local business owner from Summersworth, I'm spacing on the other ones. Oh, economic development specialist from Rochester, and then the director of Seacoast Eat Local. And they're going to discuss, you know, how their organizations have had to adapt, and I'm looking forward to it.
I, I guess the comments that I would have would just be relative to, you know, reviews of larger subdivisions. So, you know, we have one before us now, and we've had a peer review, engineering review done of that. We've gotten staff reviews, fire department, and Public Works. And, you know, there's a lot of information there, but, you know, please, please read through that and understand that, you know, those aren't always all encompassing of what the board is meant to do. These are just guidelines for us to go on. So please come up with, you know, if you do have questions or comments or things you don't feel or should, should be brought up, please do that in the next, in the meeting that we do have. And, yeah, I guess that is primarily what I wanted to mention. You know, you can use all of our references, I mean, go back to the master plan, does this fit into, do these types of things fit into our master plan? See, yeah, we've got those, those guiding documents for us. That's, oh, I have. So this is when we would have a public comment period, so this is an open time for anybody in the public. If they would like to mention something or have a question for the board, bring it to our attention. Probably now would be that time. Okay, hearing none, we'll just move on to the next item in the agenda. We have three sets of minutes, meeting minutes. I think they've been reviewed. Anybody have any further comments or reviews on those? If not, I would entertain a motion. Of course, Ed, go ahead.
I, I sent some very late edits to Joanna, and I apologize for that, I can just read through them quickly so that, so that's public and everybody knows what they were. So for the minutes of 6:10, I had asked for four small edits. Line 29, just add the case number, it's discussed later in the minutes, but that'd be clarifying there. Line 52, I just clarified that I suggested making the driveways of Propose Lots 2 and 4 line up at the driveway road across from the lots. It was agreed it would be done for Lot 2. Lot 4 would not be moved due to certain restraints of the existing culvert. And line 87, just remove a phantom A, that's before Deerfold Road. A very, pretty minor, except for the, the one clarification there. The minutes of May 27th, that is, or, or, let me, I'll skip that, skip that one, they were fine. Minutes of 5:13, just add the resource rep, Robert. And line 56, I didn't know if we wanted to add language, Dirk, where you, I think you had indicated where the town attorney's guidance was that the lot line adjustment was okay, that it's increasing land with the same use.
Yeah, I don't have it right in front of me.
The minutes or not?
Could you repeat what that was, Ed?
Yeah, so, May 13th, in line 56, somewhere in that, during that discussion, I know you had made a mention that the town attorney guided us that this law line adjustment was basically fine and that it's increasing land with the same use.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, we could include that, I guess, I don't have any issue with that.
My very last item of clarification for any of the minutes is when we continue cases and they're, they're continued on the agenda. Should we be notating them as continued in the minutes? Like continued from, you know, such and such date or originally whatever date? I don't know if that's necessary or overkill?
No, I think it should, I think I agree, somewhere in there, you know, it should say continued from whatever the date was previously. I mean, I think that will help out moving forward. I mean, it doesn't, may not have to be for any of these minutes, but I think maybe moving forward when they are continued, we just note that. Because someone could randomly be just be picking up, you know, the May 27th, and I think it's the first meeting that that one had gone to, and they won't backtrack to see other ones.
I don't think we need to say continued from, you know, originally heard such and such date, continue to, continue to, continue to, if there's multiple continuances, but maybe originally heard and continued or something like that.
Yep.
That's it. For me, that's plenty.
Okay, was that a, a motion with the...
Yeah, sure, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of May 13th, May 27th, and June 10th, 2020, as amended.
Second? That was Susan?
Okay. Let me roll call it, Ed?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Dirk is yes. So does that mean we're all caught up on minutes?
Yes.
All right, good job, Joanna.
Thank you.
Powered through them.
And back in the office 18 hours a week now.
It's a lot of work, but we did it.
All right, I think that's all I had, anybody else? Kind of, it's bummer about our little technical issue, but, yeah, we'll try and make sure. I, I don't know, do we know the reasoning or what happened there, if it was a cut and paste, or was it...
Well, you're, in order to post it to the website, I copy the invitation and then paste it. So there shouldn't have been that glitch. I don't, and I copy and paste it to the emails that I send out for the agendas, too. I didn't do anything different than I've done all the other times.
Okay.
I don't know what happened.
Was anybody else able to, any of the board members able to click the link and get into this meeting? Okay, did you try and couldn't?
Right, I tried.
Okay.
That's why I didn't use my, usually I'll come on with the video using my phone, I have trouble with that. So, you know, something different tonight, which is why...
The meeting ID was...
Say that again, Sue.
Yeah, the meeting ID was different. Joanna sent out an email right at the beginning around 7 o'clock, and I have a phone. So the call-in number was the same, but the meeting ID was different, and then I was able to get in.
Okay.
But I could get in before, too.
Right, so I sent you your ID number.
Yeah, the meeting ID worked to get into that other meeting, just the link didn't.
Oh, I see.
So if you clicked, if you were on your computer and clicked on the link, it wouldn't, it was, wasn't working.
It wouldn't, oh, I see.
Chairman, I move that we adjourn.
Uh, any second?
I'll second.
All right, Ian, so everybody in favor, shut your screen off.
Thank you.
See you next, see you next time, good night.
Good night.
Town meeting, town meeting.
Yes, town meeting.
Wear your mask.